All right, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have to continue to handle our council meetings a little differently for the protection of the public and our staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager to give us a brief explanation. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allow the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand option to speak when the mayor announces the time for the general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing *9 at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the city council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, I conclude my comments.
All right, thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute, I wanted to mention that we lost a prominent person in the community these last couple of weeks, Mr. Jim Spawns, and I wanted to ask everyone to keep his family in our prayers tonight.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 20th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item B, Agenda Approvals, Additions and/or Deletions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to pull Items F7, and if the council doesn't object, I'd like to also pull Item J1.
All right, with city managers requesting to pull Item F7 from the consent calendar, which is the setting of the public hearing date for the water and wastewater rates, and the other item is the appointment to have a city council member delegate to the League of Cities. Any comments from council on these two items?
I have no problem.
Okay. We'll move those then.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a presentation this evening, the Organics Recycling Implementation by Cal Waste.
Let me click the left button on, left. Flip it over on your, on the left side, there's an on/off switch. There you go. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Hopefully, we're good to go. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mike Sowling, Public Works Director. I'll be making the presentation, but I do want to note that we've got several representatives from Cal Waste in the audience as well, so, and after the presentation, we'll both be available for questions. So with that, basically, this presentation will cover the city's proposed organics recycling program implementation as required by state law. So starting with the basics first, organics are defined by the state, for this purpose, as food waste, yard trimmings, untreated wood, and food-soiled paper. These organics are now required to be separated for recycling. And then to answer the why question, these organics generate methane and other, what we call greenhouse gases, in landfills, and so that's why they're separating them out now, to keep them out of the landfills, because those greenhouse gases have been attributed to climate change. So back in 2016, the legislature passed what's known as SB or Senate Bill 1383, and that took effect, became effective January 1st of this year. Now, there was supplemental legislation that was passed that allowed for a one-year extension, if you will, and the city council approved that last December. So for us, SB 1383 becomes effective January 1st of 2023. And then I just want to note at the end here that the legislation requires that all organics generators must recycle. So what does this mean in terms of change? Households and businesses must now separate these organics, and that means for all residents and most businesses. So these organics, for all residents and businesses that have a yard waste cart, these organics will go into that yard waste cart, so they'll be co-mingled with those yard trimmings. And then for larger businesses that don't have a yard waste cart and typically have larger containers, because they generate more organics, it'll mean a separate bin for them, or a dumpster, if you will. Essentially, what this boils down to is putting food waste into the yard waste cart or in a separate organics recycling container. All other garbage still goes in the gray trash can or cart or dumpster. And then violations, as far as the legislation reads, initially for the first two years, which would have been this year and next year, '22 and '23, the state is basically, has enforcement authority over cities and counties, municipal entities. But in 2024, that authority switches to cities, counties, municipalities will have enforcement authority over individual residents and businesses. With regard to exceptions, because this is kind of one of the first questions that we get, there are a couple of options, but they're really for businesses and multifamily only. And by multifamily, I guess I want to clarify that that means apartments and the like. So there's a low-volume exemption, and that's for businesses only, and that's defined as any business that has a total service less than two cubic yards. And so what I mean by total service is that the trash service and the recycling service currently don't total more than two cubic yards per week. So for those businesses, if they're basically generating under 10 gallons of organic waste per week, then they can get a low-volume exemption. For businesses that are generating over, or that have over two cubic yards of total service per week, they are limited, they, basically, the bar raises a little bit higher to 20 gallons of organic waste generation per week. So if you've got, you know, that level of service and you're under 20 gallons, you can get an exemption, or if you're under two cubic yards of service and you generate less than 10 gallons, you can get an exemption for a low volume. Then there's a physical space waiver, and this one applies to businesses and multifamily or apartments. And so basically, it requires a demonstration of a legitimate and cost-prohibitive space constraint. And so what do I mean by that? What that means is if somebody had to move a wall, say, or something like that, in order to create a bigger space so they could have that third container for organics, and that was overly expensive, if you will, to do that construction, then they could get a space waiver, a space constraint waiver. The other check on it, though, is, you know, sometimes some businesses will have, you know, just, they've always had this size of container in their dumpster area, if you will, and they'll look at, will look at, can they go to a smaller-sized container? Maybe they've got, say, for example, a four-cubic-yard dumpster, and they really only need two. So if we could shrink the size of container, then that creates the space for it, they wouldn't qualify for an exemption. But if we can't, you know, gain space from shrinking the size of containers, then they would be able to qualify for that space constraint exemption. And then the third one is what they call an alternative recycling exemption. This is for businesses only, and so this is for typically the larger businesses that may have kind of a, an operation what's called self-haul or backhaul. And what this, maybe a good example of something like this is a grocery store that's got, you know, perishable foods that are maybe past date, that those, they've got it already set up to where that, those organics items are hauled off to a, an approved processing facility. So what's called a self-haul by maybe a third party, or a backhaul, which is by that operation or company itself, so. So that's an alternative recycling exemption. And unfortunately, SB 1383, the state law, does not provide any exemptions for the residential side of the spectrum, so. So in response, the city and Cal Waste entered negotiations about a year ago, and through that process, services were looked at in an effort to help reduce the cost impact to ratepayers while at the same time staying compliant with the state law. What you see here is the list of items that were looked at and the approximate amount of savings that could be applied from the given item. So kind of first to start, approximately $156,000 from residential cart migration savings was agreed to, and then the city agreed to waive a portion of its franchise fees on organic service, and that's about $109,000. And then the city is reducing its franchise fee kind of across the board, so not just organics, but on the trash and recycling too, by 25% and contributing that funding, and that's about $182,000. And then some options, I kind of want to touch on some things that were considered but rejected. Currently, everyone enjoys a free annual handy hauler service, and they also enjoy a free bulky waste pickup once per year. So we looked at whether or not if you eliminated those services and what would those values be. And so eliminating them respectively entirely would be about $302,000 that could be applied from the handy hauler, and then I think it was $199,000 from the bulky waste. So when that was rejected, then there was another consideration given to, what if we looked at a reduced rate option? So it's not free anymore, but maybe it's, you know, a, you know, three-quarters price reduction kind of thing. And so the savings from those obviously drop significantly, so you're looking at $61,000 on the handy hauler and $48,000 on the bulky waste. And again, those were rejected. Some other things that will provide some relief, too, include a proposed new transfer station, and I'll be definitely talking about this in depth later on in the presentation, which would be owned and operated by Cal Waste. It's proposed that the city would lease 20 acres out at its wastewater treatment plant facility, which is out off of Twin Cities Road, and the lease revenue from that, and then Cal Waste proposed a matching revenue totaling, between the two would be about $168,000, so $84,000 from each side, if you will. And the transfer station would be open to the public, and by that, saving people that are using, say, Kiefer, a significant trip, you'd be much closer, obviously, and so those reduced trips will result in savings to residents not having, you know, to drive as far. And by consolidating the various types of recyclables, this is another thing, and the organics, et cetera, that results in a larger full-size trucks, basically consolidating into the big, like, 18-wheeler trucks, that gives a greater scale of economy, and that means, you know, greater fuel and maintenance and labor efficiencies as well. And then there's also the air quality benefit from that, reduced air emissions, not having to drive as far, and less traffic congestion as well. So what does this all mean to the ratepayers? So it's nearly a 20% reduction in commercial trash and recycling rates. And how is that determined, you may ask? Well, from those numbers that I kind of gave you before, those dollar amounts, what they result in is about 9.3 or about half of it or so from the franchise fee decrease, and then another little over 5% from the, half of the cart migration savings, and then about 5.38% from the treatment plant rent. So that all totals the 19.8. And then on the residential side, what it results in is about a 22, not quite 22.5%, 22.4% savings from the total $9 increase in the organics rate for residential. And how that breaks down, I'm just going to break it down in dollars and cents on this side, because the residential rate is static, whereas the commercials vary on sizes of service. The residential side is about 41 cents from the franchise fee reduction, the 77 cents from the other half of the cart migration savings, and then about 83 cents from the transfer station, and those are all cents per month. So it's a little over, just over $2, $2.01 overall savings, so you take 201 off of $9, and that's your 22.4%. So while I went over some of these previously, I wanted to break it down a little bit more. As the organic rates for residential are proposed to phase in over three years, the respective dollars are shown here by year. So approximately $45,000 the first year, then $91,000 approximately the second, and then again, approximately $109,000 the third and fourth years. So this will be evaluated annually thereafter, but we're really just looking at a four-year window in this. So next you'll see the city's lease from the property for the transfer station, that's $84,000, again annually, so. And then the overall 25% franchise fee reduction, and that's about $182,000. For Cal Waste's side of the contributions, residential rates back when the contract was approved, and I believe it was 2018 and took effect in 2019, those residential rates were phased in, as you can see, over those years at that time. And so that was essentially a contribution on their part of about $551,000. And then the commercial side of that results in about $103,000 in savings. And then with the proposal that they're looking at now to, again, phase in these new residential organics rates, that's about a $704,000 contribution. And then again, that matching money on the transfer station lease of $84,000. So all told, if I've done my math right, the city's, you know, contribution totals approximately $1.3 million, and Cal Waste is about $1.6 million. So what does all this mean, really? Starting with the current residential rates and services, as you can see here, most folks have the 64-gallon trash service and pay $40.42 a month currently. That's what's shown in the blue text there in the middle. The other two service sizes on residential are the 38 and 96, which you can see there also. So what they get currently for that is it includes alternating bi-weekly recyclable and yard waste services, and it also includes, as I kind of touched on before, the once-per-year free handy hauler service, and then the once-per-year free bulky waste pickup. And then you can see for the other two, as I noted. So that's the current. And so looking at the proposed new residential rates shown here, which I want to emphasize include the new organic service, that same 64-gallon service level on the trash is the blue text again across the board. So you can see how it's going up from the 40-42, and then in March of each year thereafter to, I think it's, I'm going to have to squint because I don't have my glasses, but around $53 in 2026. So the trash service will remain weekly, and recyclables will remain bi-weekly. The change here really is that the organics/yard waste combination cart will be picked up weekly, so no longer bi-weekly for yard waste. Now it's every week, and it includes the organics, too. And then you can see that the free handy hauler stays and the free bulky waste service So looking at how we compare, you know, we looked around at some of our neighboring cities, and most of these, with the exception of Lodi, have already been through this and passed their organic rates. And so the red bars on the chart there that you see, those represent the roughly that 64-gallon-sized service, so we're just trying to get as best as we can, apples to apples, across these. And then the orange bars show where that respective agency would be in 2026, and so you can, you can kind of see how they go. Now, the thing on Lodi that I want to note is they are currently in the process, so we don't have new rates for them yet. They're negotiating. But what I would point out is if you look at Lodi as far as the current rate, they are already above Galt, and so we would expect that they will be above us as well once they do complete their rate negotiations. And as you can see in the chart, I mean, you've got the city of Sacramento and I think it's Folsom, you know, they're the, they're at the high end, basically. We're definitely, you know, a step down from them, and then there's a couple others that are below us as well, and I think we're pretty much on par with the city of Davis, so. That's just kind of a quick snapshot of how we compare. So turning to the commercial side, here are the current rates for once-a-week service of the various trash and recycling bin sizes, so you can see 1 through 6 cubic yards, and then again, this is just a once-a-week pickup. That's where they're at currently. So the new rates, and this is the trash, I think I want to emphasize, the previous one had both trash and recycling, but this is trash only, so you can see how they initially drop in March of next year, and from what, from what they currently are, and then it kind of starts ratcheting back up again. And again, these are all once a week. On the recycling, basically the same thing, again, these are just recycling rates, and again, you'll see in March of '23, what's proposed is you would see a reduction, a step down, if you will, and then it starts ratcheting back up. So this slide shows the new commercial organic service levels, which will be a separate additional cart, as I touched on, or bin, depending on the amount of organics a business generates. As this is a new service, Cal Waste will be working with businesses to ensure their service is sized to the business's needs. And I have an example on the next slide that I'll go through to help explain what I mean by that. So this is a restaurant example, and that's probably one of the highest organics generators that we have, you know, as far as businesses go in the city. So the left chart that you see shows the current service, and again, that's trash and recycling only, because there is no food waste service currently, and there's a total of 12 cubic yards of weekly service. So a six-yard trash bin picked up once per week, and a six-yard recycling bin picked up once per week. The right chart shows the new, what we were going to term right-sized service, which now includes the organics food waste recycling. So in this example, the trash bin gets reduced from a six-cubic-yard size to a four-cubic-yard size, and that two cubic yards that used to be in the trash, well, what's basically organic material, is now in the food waste bin. And so what you look at, with the reduced rates on trash and recycling there, in the green on that left, or on that, sorry, that right chart, you'll see that there's a savings in this example, a little over $400, actually. So, but I do want to note that this is one example, and that the cost reduction will vary depending on the size and level of service that the given business has. So getting back to the proposed transfer station, and I'm going to put on my glasses here. So I kind of want to start off with the basics. Yeah, I think there's been some misunderstanding about what a transfer station is or isn't. A transfer station is not a landfill. It's not a place where waste ends up and stays permanently, hence by the name "transfer", meaning waste is brought there usually in the smaller, you know, garbage trucks that we see around the neighborhoods, brought in, sorted, and whether it's recyclables or trash or whatnot, so sorted and then reloaded, typically in a bigger truck, like an 18-wheeler for trash, or the recycle is broken out and, you know, various services or whatnot may be hauled off as they accumulate. So I just want to emphasize that it's not a landfill, there is no permanent disposal of trash at a transfer station. So I've kind of gone through that. It will be open daily to the public, which I think I touched on before, for Galt residents and businesses to self-haul their excess waste. As far as when and where, what we're looking at, we anticipate the planning and permitting process to take about 18 to 24 months, construction to take about another 12 months. And we're looking at a 20-acre area at the city's wastewater treatment plant, which will be set aside and leased by the city to Cal Waste. It is a convenient location for Galt residents, as I noted, a lot shorter trip than going to Kiefer for those that do, but obviously far enough out of town that you're not going to have those noise and odor-type issues bothering, you know, local residents. So to kind of give a visual as to what we're talking about here as far as the location, you can kind of see the overall map of the city with the city limits, and then you'll see that the, I don't know if I have a pointer on this. Well, maybe. It may not show on there. No, I guess it is. So this is the city's wastewater treatment plant, this basically dotted line outline, and the transfer station site is proposed in, basically in this southwest corner. And so this is the aerial map, and you can kind of see where that is, the treatment plant being up here, so it's a good distance, I'm sorry, treatment plant's over here. That is the range. So anyway, it's to the west of the treatment plant. So why is it a good investment for the city? There's a lot of things on here, so just to kind of go through them, it's obviously convenient, we touched on that close by. It'll accept various wastes, the green waste from residents and gardeners, and demolition debris from contractors, homeowners as well, do-yourselfers, as well as excess waste and junk. Obviously, it'll help the city stay cleaner, people will be more motivated to use it if it's closer kind of thing. There's an opportunity to receive other kind of special, not what we call non-acceptable household waste. These would require separate approvals, but they're typical, typically accepted at transfer stations. And by that, I can kind of go through this real quick here, but household hazardous waste, what we call HHW, that's, you know, basically your pesticides, paints, any kind of garden products, pool chemicals, household cleaners, those, all those kinds of things. Then universal waste, so these are things like batteries and fluorescent bulbs, medical sharps, medications, and then electronic waste, e-waste, computers, telephones, anything basically that's got, you know, electronic circuit boards in it, TVs, all that stuff. And then other hard-to-dispose of items, this is things like large appliances, scrap metal, tires, mattresses, and then vehicle fluids and filters, so car batteries, too, is on there, so. All those are additional wastes that could be accepted there. Continuing on, improved air quality, and again, reduced traffic, as I mentioned already, and then not only from the people using it, but also from consolidating the smaller garbage trucks into the larger 18-wheelers, and then shorter trips, as I mentioned. And then once it's built, that transfer station will provide some additional jobs, too. Cal Waste estimates as many as a dozen. Utilization by the city, my department, Public Works, as well as Parks and Rec, we obviously have a lot of waste that we generate and just collecting from city facilities, so trimming trees and vegetation and whatnot. It'll also help the city do its part to meet this 75% state recycling mandate by providing that sorting capability, you know, they really don't have that ability where Cal Waste is currently at. So having some additional room to do that sorting will really help sort those materials and help us essentially do our part. I think this is about the last slide on this, but, so the local transfer station, and Cal Waste does a fantastic job of this already in educating students, they've got a great educational program there at their current facility, but this would again provide that same opportunity for educating children and other groups as well on, you know, the importance of recycling and composting and the like. And then the transfer importance of recycling and composting and the like. And then the transfer station will provide the community an opportunity to develop relationships, whether it's with, you know, nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity, or South County Services, the Food Pantry, other organizations too. So how would a transfer station affect these 1383 organics recycling rates? So we already touched on the rent. I think that's been established. The operational efficiencies as well. And then would provide Cal Waste the ability to control future rate increases by providing them access to new disposal and diversion destinations with a transfer station. With these organics, and I don't want to speak too much for Cal Waste, but, you know, they've been looking at facilities where they can take these organics. And by having a bigger place to, to better sort these materials, they can gain some efficiencies from that and probably get some more competitive pricing too. Because if they've got a higher quality organic product that they can send to a different facility, they can probably get, you know, a better rate for that. So, you know, the question obviously is, so if there is no transfer station, what would that mean for our rates? And while through all these negotiations, there wasn't really a deep dive or anything on that, preliminary estimates, you know, came up that it would probably be at least 50% higher. And that may also be affected too by, you know, looking at some of the things that were rejected, like the handy hauler and the bulky waste pickup. So some of those things might need to be looked at again, kind of thing, if there were no transfer station in order to kind of keep rates what we're looking at. So, so I think that is about it. As far as the schedule, and I want to make a correction on this. So we show that the public outreach workshop is this Thursday night at 6:00 PM. It's not at Littleton, as it's shown there. It will be at Chabola. So I want to make sure everybody understands, don't go to Littleton, go to Chabola for that. So the same presentation will be made, and there'll be definitely, you know, more time and, and opportunity, I guess, to interact with folks, try to answer their questions and whatnot. So, and then again, as far as when this takes effect, we've been working with Cal Waste, if, you know, if we can get something to counsel formally for them to consider that, that would be in September is what we estimate currently. And then pending council approval, we would look to complete implementation by the end of this year, because we have to by January 1. And, and then the organic service for all residential and commercial accounts will start by December 31. I think there's a little bit of a caveat there. I know Cal Waste has, had some supply chain type issues in getting some of the organics carts for the commercial side, which have been under some different state mandates already. But, but anyway, barring any logistic issues, that's, that's what we're looking at. So I think with that, I will be available, as well as Cal Waste representatives, for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. Just one quick question. You showed the October, there's an organics meeting tomorrow night, right? You mentioned?
It's Thursday is our workshop.
Right. But on the slide, it said October 18th, so that's the second one.
Oh, so October 18th. Sorry, did I skip over something there? We were looking to, I think that's for basically setting the public hearing for the rates. So that would, we anticipate that would come to council on the 18th. And then, because there's a 45 day noticing period, we would be looking at December 6 for the council to consider the rates.
So there's a community, just for those that are watching, there's a community meeting tomorrow night. Welcome.
Thursday night.
Sorry. Yeah, it says Tuesday. Okay, Thursday night.
Right.
At the Littleton.
At Chabola, sorry.
Chabola.
Yeah.
For the community to come and hear more about this.
Absolutely.
And then there'll be a public hearing similar also.
The public hearing would be December 6, tentatively currently.
So what's the October 18th?
So that's where we would come to council and basically request council approve setting December 6 for the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, before I go to the council to ask questions here, just want to say thanks, Mike, for putting this presentation together. I know that we all went over it to make sure it was thorough and, and there was nothing left out. And Councilman Lozano and myself, obviously part of the ad hoc for, what, like going on three years now, that we've been a part, working with the folks at Cal Waste, yourself, Frank, City Manager, and even a previous City Manager, actually. It's been a long time coming. So I just want to thank you for seeing the culmination of all that work. And I look forward to hearing what the council and the public has to say. So I'll start with, I want to start with council comments. Do you want to see if there's any public comment on this first? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay. Should you be in the room and you'd like to make public comment, you may fill out a speaker sheet at the back corners of the room, bring it forward to the clerk. Council, you make questions on this presentation?
Mr. Mayor, a very quick, Mr. Selling, first of all, thank you for this detail, as you know, this presentation. You already mentioned on the public outreach. This is very important for me to public outreach. This is the voice of the city. Transfer station as related is, is, is maybe reasonable, because there can be a rate reduction in residential and the business. But I just want to make sure, I don't know what your plan to outreach, how many outreach, and what kind of is can be open for?
Yes. So, yeah, fantastic question, Vice Mayor. So basically, what we've been doing already, and this item was actually scheduled on the August 2nd council agenda, which unfortunately the, the meeting was canceled. But the information was out there from that, because the agenda was published. And also, we've been putting it in the newsletters and the bi-weeklies and, and putting it out on city social media and the, and the website as well. Many of the businesses already know about this, because they are under some different state laws that pass, different Senate bills, if you will, than 1383. So a lot of them have already been, you know, made aware, and we've had to show compliance with Cal Recycle, the state agency, that's, you know, in charge of implementing these, these regulations. So there's been a lot of that type of outreach already, but there will be the workshop opportunity on the 18th. And, you know, depending on that, I mean, there may be, you know, potential for additional outreach if, you know, if, if the demand is there. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I wanted to just mention a couple things. Just for clarification, on slide seven, can you pull slide seven back up?
Yeah. Let's see here. I think I know which one you're talking about.
Next, right there. So, so just, just to clarify on this, I want to make sure that this is very clear to the public, because I think this was brought to my attention of the way this, that was phrased. And so I want to make sure we touch on this. The 19.8% commercial reduction is basically, that's a reset. So we're taking existing commercial rates, and we're basically applying a 19.8% discount to those to reset them to a lower level. And then you add in the organics, which you showed on the others, which culminate in most cases, less than they're paying now for the original, even after the organics. But the 22.4 is, is actually not exactly like the 19.8. The 22, 22.4 reduction is not, this is not an exact reset on the current residential rates. What that reflects, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just saying this, is we looked at what the organics program was going to originally mean to the, to the residents. And through our negotiations and the contributions from the city and Cal Waste monetarily, and, you know, through that process, we were able to mitigate that cost down, reducing the original cost down by 22.4. So I don't want people to get the misconception, I want to be very clear, that people in the residence, and you showed the chart, but I wanted to make sure, that residents are not going to see a 22%, 22.4% reduction the first time their new bill comes out. That's not what that means.
Correct.
Am I correct?
That's, that's all accurate, Mayor. Yeah, the 22.4 is really a reduction in the organic service cost, if you will.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, actually, so just, and again, this will be repeated many times, but I think you can't say it enough, is when this program goes into effect, residents will see basically a $4.51 increase in their bill, $4. We mitigated that down to $4. That's the first bump. And then it will, the next bump will only be $3, and the next bump will only be $1.90. The final bump is $2.80. So we had to front load that in order, you know, to help, you know, the program get off the ground. But those total increments equate to the total increase. But the, but the original increase will be $4.51. That'll be the jump to, to the residential garbage bill.
Correct. Correct.
Want to clarify that for the public. So there's no misconception on this slide.
Right. And if I may, Mayor, as far as the 19.8% too, it's not, you can't just take, you know, the current trash rate for a given service level and drop it 19.8%. It's really, the 19.8% is the sum, if you will, of those different amounts of money that are being applied to the rates. So it's not just an across the board, like you couldn't just take the two yard, once per week service and, and take 19.8% off of it. It's, it's a bit of math, I guess, but I guess I just don't want commercial businesses to kind of go, wait, that doesn't equal 19.8. It's the overall, because the rates.
All right.
You have so many service levels. Yeah. Yeah.
Right. As you showed, and you demonstrated with the rest, because this is very important, because, you know, we went through in 2018 with.
Right.
Basically, at the time, there was a feeling that council was not looking at present versus new rates and comparing it side by side. We were just looking at new and not knowing. So as you demonstrated on the one slide, we took an example of a restaurant, which is a good example, applying that reduction, and then doing the, the right sizing to introduce the organics, right, right there. But basically, if you look at the total, bold, the bottom, the same customer paying 1876 now, essentially you'd be paying 1467. So actually, even if the organics is applied, their, the bill should see some reduction. That, that is an example. Now, we're not going to promise that every case is going to be that, but I think in a lot of cases, we looked at that there was, we were mitigating an increase at all. It was just going to try to be a.
Yeah, it will, it will, it will vary for sure. I mean, and this is, you know, probably a higher level use, and particularly would be in a restaurant with organics, you know, so, you know, just fair disclosure, so to speak. But, but yeah, for a smaller office business, they may not see much of a, you know, of a, of a reduction, or they may even see, depending if they're not generating any, any, any food waste, they, they may have a little bit more, so to speak. So, but, well, actually, they wouldn't know, not because of trash and recycling.
Which takes me to my next question. So the two cubic yard, two cubic yard generator for the exemption, two cubic yard is basically 200 gallons. So if you have a 64 gallon cart, so if a, if a business has one 64 gallon trash cart and one 64 gallon recycle cart, those two together, you know, is only, you know, 128.
Right. So, yeah, there's kind of two, you're right. So you'd fall under that two cubic yard service. So now at that level, that means you're looking at generating less than 10 gallons per week of organic waste. So if you're under two five gallon buckets, you're good to go.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. And, and, and there is, and it's already been in play for a while now, but there's a process where businesses could apply for an exemption and.
Yes.
The city is looking at those and deciding if those exemptions are granted and, and not. So.
Yeah. And we've, I think we've approved around 30, I want to say. So.
Okay. Counsel, go ahead.
I, I just have a comment. You know, I mean, when you're engrossed in all the numbers, they make sense. But as I'm listening to you gentlemen, not that you're saying anything incorrectly, but I think it actually adds confusion to the general public. I would just make the simple suggestion that when we have the outreach for the public, that you simply just give them the numbers. This is what we're paying. This is what we would pay without any savings from the city or Cal Waste, and this is what we negotiated. So they can just see real simply, you know what I mean? It doesn't take a whole lot of explaining, because I understand what you're saying about the, you could have 30 different scenarios, and it's, no one's going to keep track of all that. That's all I got.
Okay.
Mr. Lozano? I just have a, a couple of questions. Just for clarification, I've heard the presentation before and, and had plenty of questions then. And as I heard it again, other things popped up. But I want to thank you, Mr. Selling and, and staff for putting this together, and, and Cal Waste for, for working with us on this. A couple of questions. On slide four, we talk about the exemption for self hauling, and I think you, you mentioned grocery stores. So the question is, is that a new thing that grocery stores are doing? Is that a new program? Or how long have they been back hauling?
Yeah.
Produce and stuff?
No, great question. From what we've determined, at least here in Galt, I think that Save Mart has been doing it for a while, and Rayleigh's too. So they've, they've had other programs, if you will. In fact, you know, there's, there's kind of a, a network, if you will, I don't know how to describe them, but there's these kind of one-off grocery stores where they get near expired type items, kind of thing, for, you know, they're kind of like discount grocery stores, like Grocery Outlet or something. So there's kind of, there's been a kind of an intermediary industry, if you will, on the grocery side for that. But some of the more perishable things, you know, fruits and vegetables, those kinds of things, they've already got a system set up typically for the chains like the Save Mart's and Rayleigh's, where they're hauling those to, it could be like a pet food type processing facility, or, or other farm type operations or whatnot, where they can utilize that, that perishable.
So this wasn't something that was developed as a result of SB 1383?
Not typically, no. I think, you know, like most things in business, you know, economics really does drive, you know, they're looking for any angle especially, you know, and, and as it's gotten so much more competitive. So, but I don't, I wouldn't say it's not new. I think it is for some, you know, smaller, you know, mom and popper, one-off type operations. But the chains, they're already kind of dialed in on this. Yeah.
Thank you. My, my next question's in regards to slide eight. And we talk about the contributions from the city and from Cal Waste. Could you explain how it's a contribution from Cal Waste, like, for instance, other than the rent, right?
Okay.
How, how is that a contribution? And I think I know the answer, but I.
Yeah. So basically, when they, you know, or, and I wasn't there at that time, but my presumption would have been that when the rates were determined, what they needed to be, and then as through negotiations, as, as these things, you know, occur, is there is some consideration for phasing them in. So if they, you know, you know, let's just say like this $9 for organics, if they started charging that on day one, year one, versus starting with $4.51, as the mayor noted, in year one, kind of thing. So that difference from say that $9 to that $4.51, so that $4.49, that's essentially what they're conceding, if you will, or that's their contribution.
So it's, it's providing the service at 100% level, but because we're phasing, or the plan is to phase it in, there's a, a difference.
Correct.
There, that would be the contribution.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then lastly, slide 19. Can you explain, or maybe, this might be a question for the Cal Waste representatives, but we talk about the opportunity to receive non-acceptable household waste, and that there's a separate permitting process. My, my thought was, is if you're, if you're permitting for a transfer station, that would be included. And so that's the first question, how is it a separate process? And what, and who is it with? Who do we, who do you process that with? And then, secondly, I just want, just for clarification, this, these are the items that our residents currently take to Elk Grove on Grantline Road and dispose there. And then the city's back billed for that?
Yes, some of them, not all of them. But yes, some of them. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. As far as the process, you know, I don't know if anyone from Cal Waste can probably, but I did it many years ago in my prior, but I'm sure it's changed. So I could guess, but.
I just thought it was part of the deal. So.
Hi, guys. Rudy Vacarezo with Cal Waste. So with the Household Hazardous Waste Operator's License, it's actually a license granted by the Department of Toxic Substances, which is ran through the Public Health Department in Sacramento. So it's just another operator's license that you have, and subsequently, it will be part of the solid waste facility permit. But it's just another layer that needs approval. And it's all about how you store and handle those toxic materials, i.e. you can't keep, you know, oxidizers with certain other type of like peptides. And it's just about how things are stored.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's all that I had. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Regarding the transfer station, convenient, close. So compared to like Kiefer, going out down to Lodi, I assume it would come with its own fee schedule for dumping there?
Yes.
For residents?
Yeah, I would, Cal Waste would probably determine those fees based on, you know, what their costs are. Yes, correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know that in this. Yeah, I know that in this, in this discussion, you know, the, the location, and I know there's been past discussions, you know, in, in Galt many years ago about, uh, transfer stations, and met with some opposition, but the locations, in my opinion, you know, doing the research, we're always in apples-and-oranges locations compared to what we're talking about now. This is, this is outside-the-city limits on property that is adjacent, well, it's on our wastewater treatment plant property, which is property that's really, I don't even know that anybody would even use it for anything else. It's, nobody wants to be next to the wastewater treatment plant, but it makes sense for something like this, and this is why we zeroed in on this, this spot and tried to make, you know, this be the spot that would make the most sense. And, but it's still in close enough proximity for travel that I think it would be a big asset to the community, at least that was my thought, going through the whole process of talking about this. And as someone like myself who's, you know, really adamant about keeping Galt cleaner and all the things that they do with that, this is just another piece of that program, I think, that will help for us to be able to make it convenient for people to, of Galt, to deliver, you know, items that other, to be honest with you, might find themselves dumped on the side of the road out in the country. You know, I know we kept the handy hauler program and the bulky waste in there. Councilman Lozano and I were very adamant about keeping that in there. I know that was a, a point of negotiation, brought it many times, but we didn't want to give up because we thought it was such a huge asset to the community, so this is just another, we felt, another asset to, to allowing people to have an option of taking garbage somewhere where it's supposed to go, uh, that it can be hauled off instead of just conveniently dumping it somewhere. And so I'm hoping that'll have an impact, should this, should this all go through. I said one other thing, um, so, um, just regarding that graph, you know, where you show the other cities, you know, I know that it was important that we, we kind of see where we fell, and I know we don't have Lodi in that equation yet, but should Lodi be, stay out of the equation, Galt's basically midway, so out of six cities, we're number three. So, you know, we're not the lowest, we're not the highest, but I can point out something that was discussed in our meetings that hasn't been mentioned tonight, is we are the smallest city on that, on that chart by far. And there's a thing, you know, that you brought up many times during negotiation, which is scale of economy. And for those of you watching, think of it like, if you need a million dollars, if, if our waste taller needs, let's say a million, I'm just going to use round numbers here, but if our, if our waste taller needs a million dollars to, to become compliant with a new mandate, and some of that cost has to be passed on, you know, you have a much smaller community of Galt to pass that on, whereas Elk Grove, you know, is, you know, 170,000 people, it's a lot easier to, to do that than it is Galt. So out of all these cities portrayed up here, it was a lot more difficult, which is why we had to work so hard to, you know, find money from this place and that place, and, you know, franchise fee this and that, and their contributions and ours, and to try to, you know, chop that number down. And we, and we chopped it down a lot, and I feel, you know, we could have went more with foregoing the handy haulers and the bulky waste, but we just didn't think that those, those, the, you know, the value of how much lower it made the rate wa, was going to be, uh, a good value for us to, to forego those, at least that's what Councilman Lozano and I came to conclusion with all of you. So, I guess, this was a lot of work, this was a long time. I, I promised that I would, you know, look somebody in the eye and say we think we did the best we could, you know, nobody come out of those meetings with black eyes or anything, so, I mean, we, there was a tough negotiation, there was a lot of tough things talked about, but I, I think that we also understand that we, this has to be a, a fair deal for, first of all, has to be a good deal for the community, and it has to be a good deal for the rate pairs and the people of this town. And then, and then secondly, it has to be a good deal for the other parties involved, which would be the city and, and the waste provider. It's a three-part thing, so, thank you again for that work. Any public comment on this? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Add another, quick clarification on, on the, the transfer station. So, my question hopefully wasn't misleading. The transfer station would be open to just Galt residents or anybody who wants to pay to use it?
No, it would be open to the general public, is my understanding, I'll look to, yeah, getting the nods.
All right. And then, currently, Cal Waste is hauling stuff, or going to be hauling these organics to faraway places that can handle them right now. Would this be an opportunity for them to perhaps now be one of those places where they could charge other municipalities or agencies to bring stuff here, therefore conducting more business?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, there'd just be, be more business going on in the city and-
Yes, I think that, you know, Cal Waste would probably agree that, you know, if there were to be a potential for a anaerobic digester or something like that, where a lot of times these organics is where they're taken to, that there may be something like that in the future potentially, so, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So to reiterate what your answer was to Councilman Papinow is, if, this is not just exclusive to the, the users, to the city of Galt, if Sac County users or people in, you know, the rural areas of Galt, or Thornton, or Harold, or Wilton, I don't know if Wilton would be better to come here or go to Kiefer, but, you know, they're, it's going to be accessible for all those people, should they want to use it?
Absolutely, yes.
Do we have public comment on this item?
We have one public comment, Ken Lee.
Come on up to the podium, Mr. Lee. Go ahead and just state your name for us, and then you can begin your comment.
My name is Ken Lee, I live at 400 D Street at the senior facilities. I have a concern in regards to the commercial landscapers who generate a lot of waste when they do trimmings, leaves and all that stuff, and they don't seem to pick it up. They blow it from one side of the street to the other side of the street. Is there going to be anything for them to, that generates a lot of organic waste? And so is there currently an ordinance in effect that makes them clean up the mess instead of blowing it from each side of the street?
Thank you, sir. What we'll do is we'll have, uh, Mr. Solis, can, I don't know if, if we want to just pass this on, and Mr. Solis can reach out to Mr. Lee on that question, or Mr. Heinz?
We'll pass this on to, uh, Mr. Solis to reach out to Mr. Lee.
Okay. Mr. Lee, Mr. Solis is our Parks and Rec Director, and we'll have him reach out to you to answer that question about the landscaping work and the waste from that, okay? If you want to, before you leave tonight, if you want to leave us some contact information with the clerk, we can have him reach out to you.
Okay.
Any additional public comment?
No public comment.
All right, any additional comments from council on this presentation this evening? Anything from Cal Waste you'd like, you'd like to come up and add this evening, or no?
I'd just like to say, Mike, Mike made a very thorough presentation, and I did a great, I appreciate it. We got this about all of our, our, we're, we're-
All right, thank you, sir. Well, there'll be, again, for those watching, should you want public, more information, Thursday evening at the Chabola Center, so that's the day after tomorrow, starts at what time again?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM at the Chabola Center.
Correct.
And then there'll also be an additional, uh, chance for public comment at our meeting on October the 18th.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mike, appreciate that.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
All right, moving on to item D, a regular public comment, do we have any this evening?
Um, yes.
Hello, my name is Ken Lee, I live at 400 D Street, the seniors' facilities. Lot of new seniors have moved in, and we don't have cars, and a lot of us are doing walking, and some of us are using walkers, and we're finding it more difficult to get across the streets, especially the C Street corridor, where the cars don't want to stop for us, even though they see us, and especially when they make turns. And I was wondering if there can be a bait program to catch these people that, that's this whiz by you, and they're picking up more and more speed. And that's been a general concern of many of our seniors in my building.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I can tell you that traffic on Fourth Street has been a topic of discussion for many years. I know a lot of the seniors will traverse Fourth Street to the, uh, the other side, to the sidewalk, and also across D and, D and, and Fourth as well. So, um, what we can do is, I'll pa, we'll pass your concerns on to, uh, our police department about the traffic enforcement on that street, and, uh, I'll reach out to you and see what, we can have a discussion about that. Mr. Lee, thank you.
It'd be a good item to refer to the Public Safety Committee, because he brings a good point, that, uh, some communities have had certain programs, certain times, uh, targeting vehicles that don't, uh, yield to pedestrians, so it might be something good for that committee to take up.
Um, yeah, I agree. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll bring this up at the end of the meeting as a future agenda item for them, or, or, uh, could we, could we, could we, would, would there be council consensus to defer this as an agenda item again to the Public Safety? Or, or would our chief like to comment on this, or?
I think they asked you for it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can agendize that for the next Public Safety Committee meeting, I could take that direction and just do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, any additional public comment?
Gilbert, Gilberto Valencia.
As mentioned, my name is Gilberto Valencia, and I'm a local Galt resident. I came here about a month ago to discuss the active transportation audit that I'm currently working on with a local nonprofit called Civic Thread, formerly Walk Sacramento, and the, what we're working on is an active transportation audit, or also known as a walk audit, and it's a mean for the community members to evaluate street and route access, and look at any barriers or opportunities for people like walking, biking, or mobility devices, kind of like what Mr. Lee was talking about earlier. Uh, and so, in working with Civic, Civic Thread, uh, and we met with Public Works, Parks and Rec, and the planning department from the city staff, and we've narrowed it down to two routes that we're going to be finalizing this week. We tentatively have a date set for September 10th, Saturday, September 10th, or Sunday, September 11th, to conduct this walk audit, and the next step for us is preparing promotional material to distribute to the community for those that are interested in participating. I would just like to ask if there's any groups or organizations that are interested in helping to please reach out to me directly. My name, again, Gilberto Valencia, and my email is gilbertovalencia05@gmail, so hopefully that's easy to memorize, but I'd be happy to stick around and, and discuss with anybody if they want to talk about this further. One of those routes that we were talking about was over by the, is on F and D Street, so there, I know there's two senior locations over there, that's one of the routes, the other route is around the, the, the market area. So, um, we're looking at potential future funding opportunities as well as need and necessity, and we're going to be conducting one, but ultimately with the hope that we will be conducting another in the future at a later date, so if we don't get one, uh, we can get the other one addressed later on. So, if anybody has any questions, please reach out to me, and thanks again. I'll be, I'll be back again September 6th at the city council meeting, the week right before the walk audit, to provide any last updates on that. Thank you.
Can you give us the time and date again on that?
Yeah, tentatively it's September 10th or September 11th, we're, we're narrowing it down to one of those two days. I don't have a time to share yet, but I do want to, I do want to reach out and put it on the newsletter so that it can go out to the community, potentially put it in the paper for anybody that's interested in participating as well. And so, we're hoping to finalize everything in the next week or so on a date and a route, so that we can share that and put that on the promotional material.
The papers here this evening, if you'd like to speak to them after, and I know that people may not remember your email address, but if someone watching would like to reach Gilberto, they can reach out to me, and I can put them in touch with you, I have your contact information, so we can make that contact that way. So you can just email me, uh, at my city email, if you're watching and you'd like to make contact with this gentleman about participating in that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council. My name is Mark Jackson, I am the CEO and founder of the St. Martin Foundation, and what we are, is, what we're creating is a, is a transitional housing program here in Galt, uh, for some of our, our, our local residents, and as well as residents coming from, you know, the Herald, um, what was his name, River City, River City Recovery. Uh, but anyways, St. Martin Foundation prepares its participants to success, successfully reintegrate back into society via, you know, temporary housing, state and county resources, job search skills and training, resume writing, interview skills, and appropriate dress. And we also help with day-to-day living, living skills. The St. Martin Foundation has partnered with California Human Development here in Galt, which helps provide a lot of those trainings to, to get these individual, uh, job training via Cal Jobs and, and, uh, other local educational trainings. Um, we're also working with Anchor Therapy, they're an outpatient, um, mental health clinic, uh, and, uh, Ranch Cordova, uh, as well as Sacramento Covered, they're a referral agency, uh, that we can help refer, because we, um, because what we noticed, you know, there's, there's, there, there's a big homelessness issue here in Galt, and in Sacramento County. So what we're doing is we're, we're helping bridge the gap to help these people get off of the streets, get off of drugs and alcohol, and, uh, give them, um, a safe place to, to do that, to reintegrate. We've also, we're also currently completing, we, and we, we spoke with, um, Mr. Supervisor Natale, we, we did walk a site here in Galt, located at 511 G Street. It is a, uh, it's a 10-bedroom facility, um, and we, we did, we met with the county, Sacramento County, last Monday, last Monday, and it was, they, they're requiring us to complete and register with CCAP, and they will, um, then talk with us about, uh, funding beds for, for, for this program. Um, and then, and we talked about, about five to eight beds, what they were, they're, um, initially willing to, to help fund, as well as, you know, the VA, they have funding for our veterans, um, to help with this issue. But, but, but we're here tonight, and we're asking the city, if the city's seeking, the city's help for any funding to help us get up and running, you know, with, with beds, dressers, nightstands, um, and, and, and rent for, for this facility. Once, once we're up and running, we, we can sustain through Sacramento County and with, with the VA, through contract, contracts with them. I do have copies of our business plan here, if I, if I may.
Sure, you'd like to drop us off, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything that you, um, this is my co-founder, my mother-in-law, Cecilia Overton, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, I'd just like to add that probably everybody here in this room knows someone that's been afflicted by alcoholism or drug addiction, and have been through the, the, the detox, the rehabilitation, and perhaps a transitional house that doesn't offer any means of training and, and, and getting people back on their feet so that they can be productive members of society, which is what this does. I have a lot of experience, I retired from the state as the chief of the Equal Employment Opportunity Office, managed for many years, developed many different types of trainings, so that's kind of what my role is going to be, is to provide training and to partner with, um, what was that, California Human Development, which will also get them registered onto Cal Jobs, and, and basically to give hope rather than just a place to stay for the 30, 60, 90 days, whatever, um, the funding allows for individuals, because we do see a cycle. It goes from alcohol and drug addiction- we do see a cycle. It goes from alcohol and drug addiction, then it goes to detox, then it goes to rehabilitation. And some that are fortunate can get into a transitional housing. But when that's over and they've been offered nothing, where do they go? The cycle begins to repeat. They go back on the streets, they go back to the drugs, and here we are again, paying for their detox, their rehabilitation and other things. So what our hope is, is that we're providing that training and experience to be able to hopefully end that cycle. In some little way, I think all of us have to step up and determine what our role is in helping the homeless situation. We have a lot right here in Galt.
We appreciate you coming tonight. And what I'd like to do is if you haven't already, if you could reach out to our city manager, Mr. Hines, and start some dialogue with him. I know you've, I met with you folks, and we met with Mr. Anatoly the same day. So I, you know, very privy to what you're trying to do, but I think to start the conversation with city manager and see if there's anything that is out there that the city could be a participant in this in any way. And then if such, there is such a thing, we could, you could present it to the council and we can kind of go from there. But that's where the process has to start. So if you'd like to reach out to Mr. Hines, you could get his contact information at the end of the meeting tonight, or you can find it online, or you can get it from me. I can give it to you as well. So I want to thank you guys for coming and speaking tonight. And please stick around. There's something coming up here. It has to do with homeless that you might want to hear. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Yes. On line we have G. Gomez.
Mr. Gomez, go ahead.
Can you unmute yourself? Can you hear us? Yes.
Hi. This is Galen Gomez. I am here this evening again to speak to you about animal services in the city of Galt. I wanted to share with you that since my last time there speaking before the council, that I have been contacted by several people who thanked me for speaking up, people who were sharing similar experiences. I want to thank Mayor Farmer, Councilmember Lozano, and City Manager Hines for taking the time to speak to me and collect information. I look forward to seeing what becomes of that data that you collected, or rather, the information you collected from me. I just want to take the time to also remind you that people care about this issue, and people are watching to see how this is handled. I would like to emphasize the concerns that I brought up last time in the council meeting and through email were not isolated events. I'm also here to keep this in the forefront of your brain, or of your mind, of my English speaking this evening. I saw that the council approved a proposal to put on the ballot a 1% increase in sales tax. As I read through those comments, I did not see anything about animal services mentioned. I also, again, want to reiterate that there is great public interest in how our city's management team is handling the renewal or initiation of a new animal services contract. And again, I thank you for your time, and I hope to have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Mr. Hines, are we continuing to dialogue with Ms. Gomez on that issue?
Yes. When I have something to respond to her, there are conversations going on in the background where I'm trying to solve this issue.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't have a resolution yet.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Do we have any additional public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. All right. We will move on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Sacramento Transportation Authority, we have a meeting with August 11, 2022. There was a two agenda item. It, I believe it can affect or get information in Galt. SB 1, Local Partnership Program, a competitive project ranking process, the other in SB 1, Local Partnership Program, Formulatic Distribution. These two agenda items, we approve it. And I'd like to ask Mr. Selling if he can give us a brief on these agenda items. I would really appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Selling.
Sure. Good evening again, Mayor and council. So the two items that the vice mayor is referring to on the Sacramento Transportation Authority's agenda have to do with the, what they call the LPP, or Local Partnership Program. So back in 2017, Senate Bill 1 was a major transportation funding bill that the legislature passed. And as part of that, for what we call self-help counties, meaning any county that has a transportation sales tax measure or similar, is eligible for this pot of money. There's about $200 million annually from this pot of money. And so there's what they call a formulaic piece, which is basically distributed by population and centerline miles combination. And then there's a competitive portion. So statewide. And so for Galt, on the formulaic piece, which is just, we get this money and basically the only commitment from the city is that there's a dollar-for-dollar match. And so our share, we're small, but out of that, we're going to get about $71,000. So, and so this is money that can help us, you know, probably on the C Street project is where I at least initially imagined it being applied. And then on the competitive side, out of the $200 million, about $70 million goes to that formulaic piece, and the other 130 goes to the competitive side. So that's statewide competition for projects. And I can tell you, yes, good. I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce our new deputy public works director, Mr. John Griffin, who's on board and has replaced Mr. Clarkson, who essentially retired a few months ago. But Mr. Griffin is very well-versed in the transportation sector, having worked at the city of Elk Grove before. And I know he's most recently been with a water agency, but he is, comes to us with a well-rounded experience. He worked for the city as an employee a number of years back, and then as a consultant, essentially assigned to work for the city. So he's very familiar with Galt and its needs. He's a local resident here, I believe, for over 20 years. So, local guy, and we're thrilled to have him on board. But I can tell you, just to wrap up, Mr. Griffin is well aware of these items that the vice mayor has brought, brought up. And we will definitely be looking for an opportunity to, to compete. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selling, and also welcome to John Griffin. Thank you. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinow?
July 28th was the Sacramento Air Quality District Board meeting. We received a lot of updates on potential state and federal grant money that's coming down. More to come on if there's anything that particularly applicable down here. Side note to that, it wasn't part of the meeting, but we did connect the district manager for the Galt Arno Cemetery District with the Air Quality District, and also started to initiate contact with Director Solis for any help that the air district might be able to come up with, as we all try to start complying with the state's requirement of switching over to electric landscaping implements.
When, when is that?
I don't know when the drop dead date is. I think it's next year. However, what the district and city are up against is, we have things that need to be replaced now, and we need to plan for that. Even if it's not required now, it's something that is not going to have a, it's going to have a useful life left after we're required to quit using it. So we're getting things rolling on it.
Has there been a lot of dialogue in that conversation about, because I've been kind of following that. And it's one thing to ask, you know, residents to transition to electric blowers and electric lawn mowers, but when you're talking about commercial side, like a cemetery, for example, to transition to, I don't even know if there's such thing as an electric mower that can, like a zero-turn electric mower out there that can, I mean, is that dialogue? Is that talked about?
And that's what started the dialogue, basically. San Joaquin County, Air Quality District, if I got the name right, you know, they kind of came up with a program that more directly addressed the smaller stuff like that. A lot of what's in our metro region is addressing more like buses and heavy equipment right now. We don't have any programs currently in place to help people at the smaller levels, such as us and cemetery districts and so forth. And Don Anatoly's been quite involved in that conversation too. So it's going.
Interesting. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that information. Councilman Vanderburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I attended the Consumers Groundwater Authority. They're still working on long-term funding for grants and public outreach for such things as voluntary land, repurposing long-term recharge projects, and associated data collections. Also, coming up with some sort of fee structure to pay for it all. But the most important thing is, the last time I reported on this authority, Governor Newsom had passed Executive Order N 722, requiring any repair or maintenance done to a well to go through, basically, re-permitting. It looks quite likely that that will become permanent law. So, well, the law isn't out, so it's, you can't say for sure, but they're using the word alteration to a well will go through re-permitting. So that, that might be a rough go for farmers, especially if you have a crop that has to be watered immediately. So there was a lot of discussion about not shortchanging someone that's feeding us. I also attended the CAS meeting. There was a, they were very thankful for the extra police presence on the first day of school. They're working on vape detectors, shared two-way radios, some threat assessments, buzzer systems, upgrades to cameras and fencing. Enrollment is up, surprisingly. I thought actually would be down, but apparently enrollment is up. Primary shop, state funding to make portables into permanent buildings, discussion of new employees coming to Galt schools, upgrade to buildings, and superintendent, and the superintendent came and liked our Saturday market very much. He was quite pleased and happy to see a busy day. That's, that's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. And thank you for participating in that meeting. I was unable to be there, so thank you. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, just real briefly, I had a Transportation Committee meeting with SACOG on last week. And we talked about the Citizens Initiative for Transportation Tax and the role that SACOG is planning on playing in that. There's a memorandum of understanding between SACOG, STA, and the initiative. So the long and short of it is, is the, there's an intent to ask SACOG and STA to be a part of how the money is spent, and, not necessarily how it's spent, but that when it's spent on items that aren't currently planned in the regional plan, that the project holders mitigate their, their greenhouse gas emissions. And where that comes from is the state has required our region to reduce greenhouse gases by 19%. So for those of you that, that understand that logic, that greenhouse gas emission reduction by 19% in transportation and housing is almost nearly impossible to reach. So, so we had an update on that, and we are going to have a meeting, SACOG Board Meeting on Thursday, and I'll report back out with that at our next meeting. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. I myself attended on last Friday the Sacramento Area Homeless Policy Council. This is a council, I believe this is my third meeting with them, involves local leaders from around the Sacramento area, a lot of other mayors, Mayor Steinberg, a lot of groups that are involved. It's, it's a pretty big panel. And we had a long meeting. It was about two and a half hours. And I was actually very pleased, the first meeting, you know, there was a lot of talk about what we call triage, where we're trying to figure out how to take care of homelessness on the back end, like more housing, you know, basically just throwing money at it, essentially. This time around, it seemed a lot different. We brought back a lot of data. There's been some, some kind of planning put together and some structure. I was very pleased. A lot of dialogue, and a lot of organic dialogue, really, in the meeting. And there's some real focus on prevention. There's a lot of talk about the need for mental health, mental health specialists, calling it behavioral health. So this would be substance abuse, mental illness, and trying to address that and, and have people be proactive in that way to prevent, to either not only help get people out of homelessness, but to prevent homelessness in the first place. So people like Mr. Jackson spoke about earlier, coming off of drug addiction, and they're in rehabilitation, but then they don't have the proper resources to get themselves back into a job or a place to live, into a trade. And instead, they just fall through the cracks and they end up back on the street. We had some dialogue from, you know, we are the smallest city represented, the smallest city represented on that panel. So I brought forth the concerns where they talked, started talking about money and resources and allocating that where the need is the greatest. Well, we don't have, you know, the homeless population that other cities around us do, but what we do have is important to address. And so I brought that forward. I want to make sure that we weren't going to be, you know, the last to receive any help. It was very promising that they were going to be reaching out to our meeting with all the police chiefs of cities in Sacramento County, and creating an open dialogue about resources that can be provided to our police department. These resources would be such things as health, mental health specialists, behavioral health specialists, and people that are trained to deal with unhoused homeless individuals. So that in a city like Galt where we don't really have those resources, and the police department is sometimes our first point of contact with these people, we, in situations like that, could have resources available to Galt that are paid for by the county that are not something we have to provide, that could, that could be involved in that. So it's really, that was a real positive thing for me to hear, because I think that's where we have to start. We have to look at things at the front end and not just on the back end. And so was very happy to hear that. We're going to reconvene, I think, in October, and there'll be some dates put together on that. But it was, Chief Collinowski will be contacted if he hasn't already had dialogue with these people. But it was just a positive, you know, it's a very complicated issue, and it's just, it's overwhelming, really. But I feel like they're, they're kind of now starting to talk about, the right conversations about prevention, and how do we take care of it upstream instead of on the back end. So I look forward to the next meeting on that. I look forward to what they can offer Galt, what the resources they can provide for us to help, you know, with that handling down here. So that's kind of the overview of what we talked about. And I think that's all I had for official meetings. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is going to be our information consent calendar, item F. It is recommended that items one through seven be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is required by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent? All right. I would like to pull items F5 and F6 for some questions. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve consent items one through four, and actually just one through four, which are the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19th. Actually, I'm sorry. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Okay. Sorry. All right. Looking for a motion to approve item one, the minutes of the regular meeting from July 19th, 2022, and the special meeting from July 26th, 2022. Number two is receive and file warrants from a period ending August 4th, 2022. Item three is the donation of a surplus vehicle. Item four is the amendment number one to Task Order Three for R E Y Engineers for Improvement Plan and Review Services for Liberty Ranch. Do I have a motion to approve those four items?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vanderburg, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved, five to zero. So item F5, I just, this was the, item is the award of the construction contract for the
So item F5, this was the, item is the award of the construction contract for the Gora Aquatic Center. Just a little background, we had this come to us, I think, back in March, and we asked that it be put back out to bid under a little bit of allowing for a different licensing. And the staff report talks about that it went out to bid, and it did get two bids this time instead of the one. We had the original bidder, and we had the other company, the second company, also bid on it, and the original bidder from the original sole bidder was the high bidder, or the low bidder, I'm sorry, was the winner, low bidder in this particular case. So I just had a question, just to clarify, really. So the only thing that changed, just that we went out to bid and we changed from being a general contractor to allowing a specialty C license to be allowed, but no other changes were made, right?
Correct. That's correct, Mayor, yeah. We added the C-53 pool contractor license.
Okay. And the result of that ended up with two bids, and the original bidder rebid, and their bid is now roughly $50,000 less money.
Yes.
Do you have any idea why it's 50,000 less?
It's anybody's guess. I mean, it could be something from, you know, maybe the materials, you know. I think during the original bidding climate back in March, there were certainly probably more supply chain type concerns, more shortages of materials and things like that, so there was probably more of a premium. That would be my, you know, main speculation. You know, certainly, if there's known to be more competition the second time, that could certainly play a part in it as well, and, you know, reducing a profit margin or that kind of thing, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just was happy to see that, because I know that there was a concern about, by putting it out to bid, there was a risk that the cost would be, the cost would be, could be significantly higher, and there was a fear of that. But I am a firm believer that competition drives prices, and so I was glad to see a $50,000 savings in that. And congratulations to the low bidder on that, and look forward to getting that stuff done. So that, I just, that's the only question I had. Does the council have a question on this item?
Mr. Selling, since they opened the agenda item, I think we already talked regarding that clarification about these bids, you know, they could have a $24,000 difference. Can you just explain same thing to the public?
Yeah, so, you know, when it comes to bids, contractors do strange things, I will say. They will, you know, front-load their bid, what we call front-loading, basically, when you look at a contract, and not something so much like this, because this is a pretty short in-and-out type work contract, but they will, you know, where you're going to get paid maybe over a couple of months, they will put, you know, higher prices on those early work items kind of thing, just to kind of get more cash flow, those kinds of things. But beyond that, you know, not having been a contractor, you know, it could be from a certain sub, they, you know, a lot of times contractors have certain subs that they work with, and so they, you know, may get a better deal on the electrical, or the plumbing, or the HVAC kind of thing, so. But when you look at these bids, you'll see one bidder is 20,000 more on this item and 20,000 less on the other. So with two bids, it does get kind of difficult. Once you get three or four bids, you can kind of start to get a sense of, you know, where the real pricing may be on a given bid item, but beyond that, it would just be speculation, so.
Thank you. And I also very happy to, we're saving around $50,000.
Yes, this definitely was a plus for the city to rebid this job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there any public comment on this particular item, since it was pulled?
No public comment.
All right. Look to approve item six, I'm sorry, not item six, item five. Looking for a motion to approve item five from this, item F5 from the consent calendar, which is the award of construction contract for the 2022 Gora Aquatic Center Pool Heater Replacement Project, CIP 530I. I'll move to approve it.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Item approved, five, zero. Item F6, this is the American Rescue Plan Act expenditure request related for the appropriation of an aerial bucket truck in the amount of $134,282 plus additional sales tax and licensing. So my question, I just had a couple of questions, Mr. Selling, on this. So it is my understanding that the bucket truck we have, which we bought in 2017, which is older than 2017, but we bought it used in 17, that it's having a problem passing SMOG, is that the issue?
That's accurate, Mayor, yes.
How much money have we, two questions. How much money have we spent trying to remedy that? And second part of that question would be, is there a certain, is there like a policy cap, or is there just kind of like a certain amount that we don't like to go over when we're doing repairs?
So for the commercial vehicle like that, my understanding is, it's not like the typical residential vehicle where I think you're required to do a certain amount of work dollar-wise, you know, but on the commercial side, this is, we worked with the air district folks to see if it could be exempt, because it's a municipal-assigned vehicle, and we were hopeful and expecting that that would be the case, but unfortunately, they did not deem us exempt. So we have not really spent anything to get it to be compliant. There's really no option for that, per the air district, is my understanding.
So, all right, I'm confused. So there's no option for us to try to get it to pass SMOG?
Correct. Correct.
So if it just, so because it's a municipal vehicle, if it doesn't pass SMOG, that's just, that's it? You have to disbar it?
No, I believe it's just a type of commercial vehicle, so, is my understanding. I would have to get some further detail. I don't know all the details on it, but I can follow up with staff.
I'm just bringing this up, because like, you know, just from a consumer standpoint, if you have a, and I think that truck is probably like an, I don't know if it's a Chevy or Ford, but it's probably like an E450 or F450 chassis with a bucket area. I'm familiar with the truck.
Yeah, you know the truck.
So, I mean, if the city owns a truck that's still functional, but it just doesn't pass, you know, emissions, I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, this is just saying, from taxpayer money standpoint, you know, if you had to spend 1,000 bucks or even 2,000 bucks to fix something before we go out and spend 134,000 for a new truck, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, my understanding is there's no option along those lines to do any amount of repairs to get it to pass. So I believe on some of the commercial vehicles, once they reach a certain threshold, that they're essentially deemed ineligible for that. I know at my former employer, with the fleet that we had there, too, we had these come up occasionally, too, so. But I can definitely get more detail on that. I just don't know it off the top of my head, so.
So should we purchase a new vehicle? What do we do with the old one?
So, per the staff report, we've talked to the vendor, and they will essentially give us $5,000 for it, so it would be essentially a partial trade-in value, so, you know, it would have to be sold out of state. It cannot operate in the state of California.
I did, you know, I did a little bit of research, just kind of went on Altech, which is the aerial truck you guys are looking at, and kind of looked at, they have like a used fleet online, I was just curious of the cost. And the cost you guys are asking for is very much in line with, it's actually less than some of the trucks I saw that were offered for sale, used trucks. And this is obviously a new truck you're asking for, right? So...
Right. Yeah, we did look at the used market, and I don't know if it's a, you know, just a, you know, remnant of the pandemic or what, but they don't come up very often for sale, and similar to what we had probably a couple of years ago with the, you may recall, the telehandler that we purchased used out for the wastewater treatment plant, basically the very large forklift. They don't come up very often, and a lot of times they get snapped up, you know, quicker than a municipality can, you know, get to council and get a bid approved, so.
So the threshold you're talking about, do you think, is it mileage or age, or you have any idea at all?
Yeah, I think it's both. It's mileage, age is a combination, too, but then also, I think, is the, what they call, because a lot of times these vehicles operate on hours, so they have what's called a Hobbs meter, and they operate on hours as well as mileage, so, yeah.
Well, it's just, and I understand this money is ARPA money that's been allocated, earmarked for Public Works, and you guys, you know, have your money that we've decided upon, and you can use it whatever you want. You've purchased some other equipment with that money so far, and this is coming out of that, so I know this is kind of at your discretion. You want to spend your allowance on, what you want to spend it on?
I'd rather spend it on something else, but...
Well, I would, too.
This was unforeseen, so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, so I just, it's unfortunate we're only going to get 5,000. I mean, I think that the equipment on the truck alone is worth far more than that. It's too bad that...
Yeah.
Yeah, does any of the council members have a comment on this item? No? All right. Well, thank you for your information on that. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
All right. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item F6, which is the appropriation for aerial bucket truck in the amount of $134,282 plus additional sales tax and licensing.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Items approved, four, zero. All right. Moving on to item G, Schedule Matters, Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
Just wanted, sorry if I may, if your vote was a no, it's four, one.
I'm sorry. You're correct. I didn't put four, four to one. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Moving on to item G, Schedule Matters, Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
Okay. Item H, Regular Calendar, first item's going to be from our treasurer's office. Item one is the treasurer's report for the period ending June of 2022. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Tonight, I'll give you my regular economic update. First, from the EDD website, the unemployment rate of city of Galt, again, ending...
June is 4.1%, and that, in comparison, all of Sacramento County is 3.6%. So in my past economic courses, I was always told that if you had an unemployment rate of 4% or less, that you were considered fully employed. So that's, Galt right now is at 4.1%. And I'll also provide you a statistic as far as comparing housing prices. From June of 2021, and at that point, the median price of a home here in Galt was $462,500. In June of 2022, there were 47 sales, the median price was $574,500. So if you do the math, that's an increase of 24.2%. Okay? And just in comparison, all of Sacramento County, the median price was 550,000. So we were about $25,000 higher than the median. Now, moving on to the city's treasurer's report for June 2020, and that is, I'm sorry, 2022, and that is 56% of our monies are invested in, like, say, government bonds, US treasuries, and of that 56%, 90% of it is invested in two years or less. So I've been keeping everything pretty much short-term at this point, and the reason is, rates are rising, we all know that, and that way, as items come mature, I can then reinvest it at higher rates. A very simple, simple concept. 33% of the city's money is invested in LEAF, which for, in June, earned 0.86%. So again, rates are moving up, and as a matter of fact, if you look at interest rates today, a one-year treasury bill is, or treasury note is about 3.2, and a five-year treasury note is about 10 basis points less than that. So what that means is you have an inverted yield curve. So you can actually get a higher rate if you invest in one year as opposed to five. That is usually one sign of recession, okay? And, you know, of course, we all know about inflation, that's at 8.6%, but the thing is, why people are not declaring that we're now in a recession is because of the low unemployment rate. So that also has to be a factor. If we had a high unemployment rate, everybody would say, yes, definitely, we're in a recession. So, and then, this is the meeting, I once a year, always have, and I always state what the interest earned for the city for the fiscal year of 2021 and 2022, that amount came to $358,557.33. Now, I always have to say that during the majority of that last, the past fiscal year, rates were very low, and they did not start to increase until the end of March. So we really didn't have, in the last quarter of the fiscal year, we certainly earned more interest than we did in the first three quarters. Now, last year at this time, I predicted, I guessed right, and I said that the interest that we were going to earn in the year 2021, 2022, was going to be somewhere between 350 to 400,000 in interest. And as you can see, we came in at 358. So the next logical thing is, you're going to ask me probably, what are we going to earn this fiscal year? And so my estimate is that we will earn in the fiscal year 2022, 2023, somewhere around 800 to 850,000. So we're definitely more than, in my guess, we're definitely more than doubling what we earned this past fiscal year. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I ask for council approval to accept the treasurer's report for June of 2022.
Do we have any public comment on the treasurer's report?
No public comment.
Any comments from council, from Mr. Farrell?
My question is, who are you picking for March Madness next year?
Who am I predicting for March Madness?
Well, you got it pretty close on this number, I'm just wondering if you're a...
I have one, Gonzaga.
All right. All right.
I wish I could say my alma mater, but Gonzaga always beats them, and my alma mater is St. Mary's. So Gonzaga always wins.
Well, thank you for, again, for the report, Mr. Farrell, and thank you for giving us the insight to things affecting our economy in Galt. We appreciate the info. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's report for period ending June 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. I will, seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Report approved, five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item's H2 from the city manager's office, Consider Resolution Adopting Spending Priorities for Revenue Generated by General Sales Tax Measure. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the August 4th city council meeting, the council unanimously placed a one-cent general sales tax on the November 8th, 2022 ballot, and directed staff to revise the draft spending priorities to indicate its current intent to prioritize parks and recreation services, facilities, and programs, and also landscaping maintenance on variously city, various city-maintained properties throughout the city. The attached resolution reflects that direction. The resolution is non-binding, and this council, or any future council, may modify it at any time upon a simple majority vote. Mr. Mayor and members of council, we are recommending the adoption of the resolution setting forth spending priorities regarding the use of the revenue generated by the general tax measure on the November 8th ballot.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll start off with council comments. Does anybody want to have any comment on this item, or start off?
Mr. Mayor...
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, this resolution, I would like to support the region. I just want to make clear to the citizen of Galt that I'm not a fan of... I just want to make clear to the citizen of Galt that I'm not a fan of increased taxes. However, I do believe that since the survey, say, around 59% would be in the favor of this. It is my responsibility to give the opportunity to the choice of people and let them decide. I'm voting for this tonight, to this agenda item. This can be putting the last agenda item, putting the ballot in November. Ultimately, it will be the voice of people. Who decide it pass or not, if it passes, I believe it should be go towards parks and rec. So we can get back to the same service or better service in future. If it is decided, those in the future, we need this front somewhere as is really urgency. Council have the authority to change. So tonight, I would like to support this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg, you have something? Okay. Well, you were trying to talk at the same time, so I let him go first. Anybody else?
I won't, again, spend time reiterating, I'm no fan of taxes. However, the information obtained through both surveys was pretty clear that the people were willing to consider this. It's their voice, and we can let them have a shot at it. I would note that that information did support a more broad potential application of this to various services. One of those being animal services. That was mentioned earlier in this meeting. However, the consensus of the entire council reached at the last meeting was that we narrowly construct it, and, you know, I can certainly support that.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, just briefly. I, I too am a fan of taxes, but I do believe that people have an opportunity to vote and would like that opportunity, and so that's why at our last meeting, we unanimously put this on the ballot. I would agree that I believe there should be a, potentially a broader application of this. But certainly, in the last several years, we've talked about parks and recreation and, and the lighting landscape districts and, and how they were specifically the lighting and landscape districts, how they were woefully underfunded. And so again, I'll support this because I think that we had a good conversation at our last meeting and, and the consensus was to put this toward parks and rec and lighting landscape, which isn't a bad thing. But I think that we need to consider moving forward through budget discussions. You know, what we need to do in terms of funding for things like homelessness. And again, I know that's a county responsibility, but there are some things that I think we can do internally to help with that. But also certainly animal services and, and any other public safety issues that our residents feel are important. So I'll be supporting the resolution. I want to thank staff for putting, putting it on paper and, and really kind of synthesizing our last meeting and figuring out exactly how to do this. So that's all I have, and I appreciate, again, everybody's work on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Splendario, could you do me and the public a favor and go through the resolution and explain the whereas's, the now therefor's in sections one and two, and what that means legally binding or non-legally binding, please?
Sure. So I'll, I'll do my best, and then feel free to ask me if you need more specifics. This resolution is, first of all, it's a resolution. What that means is there's three different legislative vehicles, legislative bodies, local legislative bodies can take actions. One is by motion, another is by resolution, and the third is by an ordinance. Resolutions are not by nature meant to be, they're meant to be subject to change. So the fact that this is a resolution itself and not another type of action suggests that although we wanted to set out the framework, it is subject to change. It's not as ordinances are tend to be a little more permanent. When we go through the resolution, you can see there are several whereas clauses. Whereas clauses are intended to provide background and provide information that, sorry, there's a fly chasing me, but provide, meant to provide background and factual information that led to the resolutions, the formation of the resolution. And when we go through the resolution, it provides background on some of the results from the community surveys that were done and the council's desire to adopt a resolution expressing its current intent regarding use of those, and application of those revenues. And then when we get to the now therefore clause, that is where the council then is saying that this is what action, the act, the call of the question or the action of the resolution is. And there are three, there are two main sections. One is essentially stating that, or reiterating the fact that this is a general tax. It is not a special tax, and that the spending priorities that are listed in section two are not ultimately binding. They're what this council wants and intends to spend the money on, but it could be subject to change by future, this or a future council at a future date. But this current council, as reflected in section two, is prioritizing, and we, we put them in two different buckets. It could have been maybe three buckets, depending on how you categorize it. But essentially, parks and rec related expenses. So maintenance and improvements to facilities, structures and property at all of the enumerated parks and recreational facilities there. And then also support for programming for adult and youth activities and also community events. And that's subsection, that's section two A. And then section two B talks about essentially landscaping related maintenance on city property, publicly maintained property throughout the city, and we actually specified the corridors and the streets and the roadways that are priorities based upon the council's direction. Last week, we worked with Armando Solis, Director Solis, to, to, to come up with that list. Those are the areas where there is landscaping areas on various city property. And also would apply to landscaping at all parks. And we define parks in subsection two A with that long list. And then, and any other areas is deemed necessary by the city council of, of other landscaped areas where it come online. And then section three is just a, a legal statement, again, reiterating the fact that this is not a special tax. This, the measure is not a special tax. This, this resolution shall not be construed, nor is the council's intent to convert that, this measure into a special tax. It's simply a, a statement of intent of this current council as constituted, constituted today at this point in time.
Turn myself off. Thank you for your indulgence. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. You know, that last meeting we had was really good. It's unfortunate it wasn't recorded because I, we basically walked into that room with five of us, really kind of having a difference of opinion. And after, you know, two and a half hours or we were able to, you know, all come to an agreement and compromise for what we feel will be the betterment of the community. Or at least for allowing the community to have that choice. I think that was the common goal that we had, and we're able to compromise on the details to do so. I just want to say, you know, a lot of us are up here saying we don't like taxes, and, and I mean, I don't think there's anybody that anybody anywhere is going to raise their hands and say they do. I'm not going to sit up there and echo that again because I think it, it just goes without saying. But what I would like to address is just a couple of questions that have come up in the community, and there's been a lot of talk about, you know, for those of you didn't see that meeting, is why we did a special tax versus a, why are we doing a general tax versus a special tax? Well, I think there were some council members in that meeting that, you know, maybe all of us, but some of us for sure, that would have liked to have seen a special tax. However, you know, based on the professionals that we hired and, and the surveys that were done over a year and a half's time, the data that we were shown just didn't, so that was viable. And again, with a common goal that we wanted to be able to present the people of this town with the opportunity to vote on something, we also wanted to present something in front of them we thought they actually had a chance. And so that data reflected that people were just as much in favor of a general tax as they were a special tax, even though there was differences of opinions on what people liked, and there's a lot of mention about parks, or some mention about other, other services. But, but, you know, for me, it was about, you know, I wanted it to have a chance. I would hate for, for me to be watching on August, or August, on November the 8th and see, you know, our, our resolution that we worked so hard to give the community an opportunity to vote on, you know, get 65% and, and fail because it didn't get 67. Very difficult thing, especially in a time of inflation and, and high cost of goods we're enduring right now. So we all compromised, and we came up with what we thought was the best thing. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, this resolution, what does this mean? You know, there's, you've heard from our city attorney and also our city manager that this is not binding. So people are like, well, what does this mean? I mean, if it's not binding, why even bother? Essentially, this is a promise. This is basically a promise that we are committing to intend to spend the money on this, and that's the best we can do under the legal options with the general tax measure. Now, what I can say is that if that makes you uneasy, then I would make you question why you vote for elected officials in the first place. I mean, any elected official will campaign to a member of the public and say that if you vote for me, I'm going to do X, Y, Z, or I promise to do the best job with X, Y, Z. Well, if you don't believe that or you don't trust in that, then you're not going to vote for that person. But if you, if you vote for them, then there's a certain amount of trust you put in them. And what I'm asking for is that you will trust that when we pass this resolution, that at least I can speak for myself, and I think I speak for other members on this, this council as well, that by passing this resolution and those of you, us that vote in favor of it tonight are basically giving you that word that we intend to use it for this, for this purpose. Now, in the future, can this council change that? They can. And can a future council change it? Yes, they can. But I would hope that at that point in time, if it is the desire of the, the people of this city to not be in favor of that money being changed to other purposes, maybe they would be in favor in, in, you know, five years or whatever point in time in the future, they say, you know, we'd like to see some of that money go to something else over here, and we feel that that's what we'd like to see. And if that's the case, we would hope that the people of Galt would speak up and say, that's what we want. If it's not the case, and the people of Galt would like the money to continue to what we're voting for tonight, I would expect to hear from those people in the same way. Because we work for you people, and if, if the people of Galt are not going to stand up and hold their elected officials accountable, then it's all for naught. So again, we're, my vote tonight on this expenditure plan will be my commitment that this money will be spent towards this purpose. And I can tell you that in the future, should the city of Galt decide to change that money, and it's not the will of the people to do so, I'll join in with you as well, and I'll be at the dais as well advocating against that. So that's what I'd like to say. I do support this expenditure tonight. I, I think it's a good, it has good intent. I think the resolution is well-written within its legal parameters. And I, I know that the ballot measure will be worded in a certain way. It's not going to say specifically, because it can't. It has to be worded in the way that it is. So I would encourage everybody to educate themselves on everything regarding this ballot before you decide to support it or to oppose it when you go to the ballot. Make sure you do all your research, ask the hard questions, and make sure you make an informed decision. I think that's your duty as a citizen. Is there any public comment on this?
Mr. Lee?
Mr. Lee?
I'm here on, in regard, I'm Ken Lee from 400 D Street. I came here six years ago when I interviewed the park and rec and how they made money to fund the parks and landscaping because I wanted a park in Thornton, and I wanted to know how to fund it. And they told me the major funding came from the revenue of leasing out the spaces at the flea market. Well, the flea market's dying now because a lot of the wholesalers aren't coming because everybody's buying things online. And the, the half, the spaces are empty now. And people like to come to the flea market, they don't like to see empty spaces. And I'd like to see more community involvement, like, you know, giving some of the spaces to the PTA, the search group, things like that. And basically, a lot of them, you can't find parking spaces there because 50 to 70 vendors park in the parking spaces. And so people don't want to come because you can't find the parking spaces. I've counted them, and they're all around the exit doors, and they even park in the handicap spots with the handicap stickers. And so if you don't rotate the spaces, people, you don't get the, the spending. I've been in retail over 60 years in San Francisco, and we learned from, from hogging parking spaces, if you don't turn the spaces, you get no revenue. And so I'd like to see more use and basically something to be done about parking and making the market look full.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the information. Thank you for your insight. Any additional public comment?
No more.
All right. Well, with no additional public comment and no additional comments from council, we'll be looking for, looking for a motion to approve the resolution adopting spending priorities for the revenue generated by the general tax measure.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Resolution approved five to zero. Next item, communication. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Item K, comments by staff.
I have J two.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, yeah, I thought, I just crossed up the whole thing. My mistake. All right, from the, from the city clerk's report, item J two. Appoint one city council member to the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. Ms. Hubert?
Okay, so the background is the commission, the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission consists of members from the County Board of Supervisors and city council members from the cities of Sacramento, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Folsom, and Rancho, Cordova and Galt sharing a seat. Couple months ago, Rancho Cordova surpassed the $80,000, 80,000 population count, which entitles them to their own seat on the commission. So accordingly, the city of Galt now has their own open seat on the commission. The commission meets quarterly on March, June, September and December at 2:30, and actually, they meet the first Thursdays of those months in the County of Sacramento's board chambers. And so the upcoming meetings would be Thursday, September 1st, and Thursday, December 1st. And then, of course, the first Thursday is the next year. So are any council members interested in taking the seat?
You said that meetings are at 2:30 PM?
2:30 PM, first Thursday in the Sacramento Board Chambers Office, 700 H Street.
Any council member interested in this appointment?
Geographically, it's kind of close to where I work in downtown, so I'd be willing to volunteer.
Okay. Maybe you have a problem with that?
Thank you.
Thursdays are not good for me, and so, all right, well, Mr. Papinow has volunteered himself to be the appointment for that. So I will be looking for, actually, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Looking for a motion to appoint Councilmember Kevin Papinow to the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission.
Removed.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Appointment five zero. All right, item K, comments by staff.
No comments tonight, Mayor.
All right. Item L, comments by city council members and future agenda items. Mr. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very brief. I did attend the Commission on Aging and Youth Commission meeting. I welcome and thank you for the new young commissioner, and young commissioner for their service to our community. I also attend Saturday Market. It was really nice to see the safety expo put on by the police and the fire department. As I always thank you for the public comments, staff for their continued work. As I always thank you for the public comments, staff for their continued work. And I especially thank you for everybody in this chamber. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinow?
I was approached by a member of the community who introduced me to the United Ostomy Association of America and informed me that the United States of America celebrates Ostomy Awareness Day first Saturday in October. This Galt community member actually represents the association locally, statewide, nationwide and internationally, and showed me a lot of proclamations made by various levels of government and requested that we hear from him and consider adopting such a proclamation. Said there's approximately seven hundred and twenty-five thousand to one million Americans that have an ostomy, and their goal is just to educate and inform people about that situation in the community. If two or more of you would agree with me, I will work with the city clerk to bring back an agenda item and have Mr. Shockley be able to come present this, and we can consider a resolution, or a proclamation, rather.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Got that, Mr. Heinz? Thank you, sir. All right, is that all you have? All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Two or three meetings ago, it was by consensus to bring back the accounting position to be discussed, whether it be removed in order to keep a tighter budget. I thought it was going to be at this meeting because reading the minutes, it states the next time all of the council members were together. So if that could be on the next agenda item, the next meeting, please, that would be excellent. And then, Mr. Griffin, congratulations and welcome to the city of Galt. We look forward to all the great things you'll do here. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Vice Mayor Sandu that the market was awesome this time, as it is always. But it was neat to see some of the fruits of our labor in terms of the public safety tools that our police department has. Now, I know the mayor and I were there watching the drone presentation, and it flew from the promenade over to the water tower and buzzed the tower of sorts. And so it was pretty cool. They did a good job, and, you know, I thank the staff and certainly the local public safety agencies that were out there, including the highway patrol and the fire department. So very well done. I just have to say that I'm impressed with the market. Every time I go out there, it seems like it's getting larger, and the vendors are of a good mix. And so I think that's, that's our Parks and Recs Department and market staff have done a great job of putting that together. National Night Out, we were all there for National Night Out, and I think that it was an excellent display in the community. So thank you to Police Department Chief and staff who put that together. And then, let's see, actually, oh, I did attend the commission, Youth Commission meeting. It was their first of the year. It was cool to see new people back and old people back and new people on. And so they did a really good job, and I know they're going to do good things this year. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, National Night Out was really great. I'm glad we were all there. Always a fun event. Thank you for all the work that our CSOs and Galt PD and all the city staff involved. So many people are used to put that event on. It was, it was really great, one of my favorite community events. The Saturday Market, as everybody's mentioned, has been great every, every month. I want to thank the staff at Parks and Rec again, Jackie and Ashley and all of them for all their hard work and continuing to bring new elements to that market and continued success. Youth Commission meeting, as the Councilmember Lozano and Vice Mayor mentioned, I want to thank them both for being there, as well as our city manager attended as well. It was a good meeting to meet our new mentors and, and great things to come for the, for the new Youth Commission. Congratulations to Mr. Griffin. Welcome aboard. And thank you to those who made public comment tonight, Mr. Jackson, and I apologize, Cece, for speaking this evening. Mr. Lee, thank you for your comments this evening. And Ms. Gomez on the telephone, we always appreciate public comment and hearing from our citizens on the issues that we discuss up here. Last thing I want to say is thank you to the coach of the Galt High School football team for allowing me to come out and speak to the boys last week. It was an honor to speak to them, and I look forward to their first official season game this Friday. I believe, I have high hopes this is a new era for Galt football, so I look forward to seeing that game. I will be there, and I encourage everybody to come watch them and support them. And hopefully, we can get a W. It's much needed after a long, long drought. So with that, we'll say good evening, and we will adjourn the meeting at eight sixteen PM. Good night.